Good afternoon and welcome everyone. This is a special meeting of the Victorville City Council. We have a call to order, please, and a roll call from the city clerk.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Proton McEckren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. This study session is mostly a staff presentation to the city council in regard to the proposed budgets for this coming year 2013, 2014. But before we start, we do have the public comment period. If there's anyone that wants to address the council at this time on any issue. I do not have any cards in front of me. I have not received any verbal request, so I will move on then to our workshop. If there's no comments from the council at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Doug Robertson to make the presentation regarding this workshop for the annual budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I mentioned it to some of you, I think, following the last city council meeting, or maybe in my comments, that we were this close on the budget and we closed that gap really just before the meeting. So, I wanted to do a brief introduction of what the assumptions are. We have to make a big assumption on property taxes before turning it over to your Chief Financial Officer, Adele Mosier. Essentially, when I discussed this last, we were very close on the budget and needed to either cut about a quarter million dollars or find about a quarter million dollars in new revenue. And as we were looking at property taxes, we noticed that a significant increase in property taxes occurred the current fiscal year. Brandon, if you could put the slide up on the screen at this point. But because property taxes have been so volatile, we weren't comfortable making a large projection for next year. What you see before you is essentially five years of property taxes. The little blue line at the very bottom of the chart is actually 2009. That was somewhat of a low point for us, certainly in the last five years. The sort of brownish, the purplish, the orangish, the three thinner lines for Mr. Cox's benefit were, those are the last three years of actual property taxes, 2010, 11, and 12. As you see, they sort of snake together and ultimately end up at very close to the same amount. I want to draw your attention to the thicker line. It's bright red, for those of us that can see red and green separately, that ends up at $14.4 million. That's the three-year average of those lines. So that's why I put it right over the top of those and bolded it somewhat, is so that we could sort of use that as sort of a baseline figure for the last three years. And that's very similar to the number that we were looking at budgeting for next year. But when looking at actuals for this year, and in fact, this morning, I got the May numbers finalized, actuals for this year are at $15.1 million, which is almost a million dollars higher than budgeted. The May to June dashed green line, the very top bold line on your chart, that takes it from 15.1 to 16.6, is merely taking the average June property tax collections for the last three years and plugging them in. It's a little bit dangerous to do that, and that's why we were hesitant to make that kind of a projection. Essentially, if you look at the two darker lines from May to June, on my screen, it looks sort of brown and sort of purplish, the little thin lines, they kind of mirror each other and are flat from May to June. That is relatively easy to call out, I think. That essentially is saying that for the last two years, we've received effectively no property tax attributable to June. So, one likely scenario is that we end the year at about $15.1 million. A possible scenario is that we end the year above $16 million. It's more likely that it'll be closer to $15 million than $16 million. And quite frankly, we just don't know, and we're not comfortable making that determination until a little bit later, until we get those June numbers in. We get the absolute final property tax dollars in probably August. We can close the books on property taxes and assume that anything new is for the next fiscal year. So, as part of this budget that's in front of you today, we have included a little bit of an uptick in property tax dollars, only enough to reach a balanced budget. I believe that it is safe to assume that we will be higher than that next year, but I would like to have that discussion and talk about any service adjustments at that time, maybe September or October timeframe. I want to come back with sort of a revenue refresh, if you will, to make some final decisions on any service level enhancements. A couple of key service levels that I know all of the council has been interested in are code enforcement and police. And in this budget, not to take any steam away from Mr. Webb, it does include an assumption that the council would, if they approve this budget, would add two code enforcement officers at this time. And then, on the police side, speaking with Captain LaChia, who is unfortunately dealing with a family matter and can't be here tonight, he had asked to add two police officers, two sheriff's deputies, to the retail theft unit. And at some point this spring, we got notification from the high school district that they are no longer going to fund the school resource officers. So the sheriff's deputies who spend their days on the high school campuses would have been eliminated. So, given that Sam was requesting two, we were trying to put two into the budget, what we've done is we've shifted, for budget purposes at this point, pending, you know, a final decision by the council, we've shifted those two school resource officers from the schools over to essentially the streets. It doesn't eliminate our need to respond to high school campuses in the event there's crime there, and so it's not a tremendous difference in service levels. It's more a difference in what beat they're working. So instead of working directly on the schools on a daily basis, they will likely be responding to the schools on a regular basis instead. Again, I would like to revisit that. I believe that with new property tax information and final property tax number, that we likely would be able to add those, or be able to afford to add those two police positions in October, which would give them enough time to get them started and onto the retail theft unit at that point in time. With that, that's just sort of a little bit of an overview as to the major assumption that we made on property taxes, and I'll turn it over to Adele Mosier.
Before we start, questions from the council in regard to the presentation just made by the city manager.
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand. So, are you saying that if we get that additional $1 million to 16, then you're going to add the public safety and the code enforcement?
The code enforcement is already existing in the current budget that's in front of you today.
Okay.
The two code enforcement officers. Essentially, it works out, because of the way we split with the schools, we're effectively adding to the city side of the ledger, one and a half deputy positions, because we paid for a quarter of each of those two deputies. And my recommendation is that we hold off, just to be conservative, until about October, maybe September, if we can get the numbers in in time, to then add those two deputy positions for the retail theft unit. I'm pretty confident that we'll get there, but property taxes are a little wild and wooly right now. I hear stories about them going up, you know, tens of 20 percent, and then others that have not gone up at all. So it just makes me a little bit nervous making too big a projection as we move forward. So that, yeah, that is accurate. That would be my recommendation. We give it a couple of months.
Doug, one other question. Sorry, Councilmember Kennedy?
What, how have you budgeted for the increase from the county, the administrative fee on the sheriff's contract? The full amount, some expected negotiated amount?
It is the full amount at this point in time.
Okay.
Yeah, the sheriff's contract went up several hundred thousand dollars as a result. I would say about half of that is the CalCap charge, the increase to the CalCap charge.
Doug, you mentioned that there are two full-time police officers on campus at the schools. Are two schools or are two that rotate among all the schools?
That is for the high school district, and I honestly couldn't tell you where they're located on a daily basis. Essentially, they become pseudo-school employees, and the school decides where they go.
And the city was paying for one quarter of each, so we were paying?
That's correct.
So one half of an officer?
That's correct. Essentially, we picked up the summertime quarter, because school isn't in session, those officers would then be on the street, which, you know, assuming the kids are out doing what kids do, that's probably a good place for them.
I'm just curious if these are officers that rotate among all the schools, or if for some reason, they have to be assigned to particular schools. Can anyone answer that?
Yeah, Lieutenant Billings is here, in place of Sam, and to the extent that he knows, I know, John, you're fairly new, but you were here not long ago as sergeant, maybe 14 months ago. So if you've got a little detail on the school resource officer locations, that would be helpful.
Yes. Essentially, what we have are three, or we had three, school resource officers. One is paid for, one is paid for three-quarters, or 75 percent, by the elementary school district. She is assigned, and she floats between the 18 elementary schools. Then there were two deputy sheriffs that were paid for 75 percent by the high school district. One was assigned to Victor High School, one was assigned to Silverado full-time. Because of the amount of calls for service we have there, there was a need. The high school district informed us that they won't be picking up that cost of those two deputies anymore, so that's what the city manager's referring to. He's picked that cost up, or the other 75 percent for each deputy.
That, my concern, which you just answered, if you have two officers that are assigned to two schools, basically full-time, and for apparent financial lack of finances, they have determined to cancel those, if they were justified to be there, I don't think the kids have decided because there's a lack of income, there's not going to be a need for calls, and we are going to be adding to our contract two officers that could essentially be called out all the time for those two schools. I think that's worth the city manager inquiring about, discussing with the superintendent, whoever that might be, because we also have financial problems that we can't afford to just take away from the police. We can take a lot of places away before we take away from our police department. I'm really concerned about that. Thank you.
I was going to say, that's the same thought I had. The demand for calls are going to change just because they're short of money? It sounds like the city is going to pick up the cost that the school district was covering.
I agree.
Any thought on that?
No, what we've done is we've, basically, the city has absorbed the cost, and we've told the two deputies they're going to be quasi-still assigned to the schools, however, at subject to being redeployed if we need them to, whereas before, they were full-time at the two high schools. The calls for service are still up.
Much like the fairgrounds, which is a state facility, if there is crime that occurs there, we still respond, even though they may or may not have their own security. It would be a very similar situation. When I inquired of the chief, I was thinking along the same lines you were, and he let me know that actually, the Victorville schools are the only ones that had been paying a portion of school resource officers. Apparently, in other cities, this is not a normal cost that the school districts pick up, which was a bit of a surprise to me, and I'll say, it tempered my response to the school district as a result.
I understand. Councilmember Vias has a question.
Yes, how many positions currently are we paying for, for the sheriff's contract?
Are you talking deputy sheriffs, command staff?
Yeah, everybody, everyone that's in our jurisdiction, what we're paying for in our budget.
We have 111 employees over at the police station.
How many vacancies are you running?
Right now?
With disability, workers' comp, things like that?
Currently running one, and I just had a meeting this morning with our deputy chief, where he has agreed to do his best over the next couple of weeks to fill that one vacancy.
Okay, thank you.
How many of those are sworn?
We have 64 deputy sheriffs. We have nine detectives, 10 sergeants, one lieutenant, one captain. So...
That's not a lot of administrative overhead. Those are boots on the ground.
About 85. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And to get to the question about vacancies, that's an issue that we held vacancies in the past, we eliminated those vacancies, and I want to say that over the last year, I've probably been asked three or four times by the police chief, hey, we've got a vacancy, would you like to hold it open? And every time, I've responded that, no, we want it filled as quickly as we can. We are, we no longer want to have any vacancies.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm wondering if the police don't have to make calls at teasers and at the marijuana shops, we may be able to cover this without any problem.
I make no assumptions on either. Doug, back to you.
And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Mosier, who can give us an overview, and then we've asked each of the department heads and the assistant city manager to give a brief, maybe five-minute presentation, not focused on every detail of their budget, but more focused on any changes to their budget this year, any additions, deletions, that sort of thing.
Budget?
Please speak into the microphone.
We're pleased to present the budget for the years 2013, 2014. Staff has worked extremely hard in preparing this budget, and I'd like to thank each one of the staff members who have contributed so much to us, and especially to Terry Ellis in our department, who has been laboring a long time for, you know, to get all of the information together. So I appreciate those people who have put so much time and effort into these budgets. We've got about three things that we're going to be discussing tonight. First, we're going to discuss the economy, unemployment, and consumer confidence. Then we're going to discuss the citywide revenues and expenditures. That means all of the funds that you're responsible for as a governing board. And then we'll be specifically talking about the general fund revenues and expenditures. So first, a little bit about the economy. The unemployment rate for the city stands at 11.6 percent as of April 2013, which is 2.5 percent less than the prior year, so that's good news. But it's still, of course, higher than San Bernardino County, which is at 9.6, and California, which is at 9, and the United States was at 7.5. Despite the high unemployment rate as compared to the state, Victorville's current rate is at its lowest since 2008. I kind of liked this graph that shows a little bit about, you know, how the unemployment rates have worked with the city, with California, and with the United States. Back in 2002, it was relatively close, you know, and continued to be close until 2006. Then we got the great disparities that we had in our unemployment rates. But as you can see, those gaps are closing, and so we're getting closer to the California and the United States rates, which is good news. Consumer confidence is another thing that needs to be looked at with our economy. The consumer confidence in the United States has increased to 76.2 in May of 2013, from 69 in April of 2013. The Consumer Confidence Index is a barometer of the health of the United States economy from the perspective of the consumer. This index is based on approximately 3,000 completed questionnaires reflecting consumers' perceptions of current business and employment conditions, as well as their expectations for six months hence, regarding business conditions, employment, and income. The next graph shows, you know, how our consumer confidence has been in the United States, and you can see it's the highest it's been for the past few years. So we're really pleased to see those numbers. Now, we'll talk for a few minutes about the summary of all of the revenues and expenditures citywide. This will kind of relate to pages two and three on the budget that was handed out to you. This is our overall budget that the city, that the city has responsibility for. The budget is $170 million, and that's up from last year's about $6.27 million. Our current revenues are the revenues that we receive on an annual basis, and those revenues are $151 million, which is approximately down $5.08 million. You know, the largest contributors of those, that decrease in revenues, was the water at $3.8 million, and SCLA at $400,000. The fund reduction, the fund balance reduction is, you know, lets us know what, how much of the fund balance do we have to use in order for us to reflect the expenditures that have been placed in each one of those funds? And so the fund balance reductions this year was up by $11 million to $19.6 million. And the contributors on that is the water, is planning on using their fund balance by $6.7 million. The sanitary and sewer are planning on using $2.6 million of their fund balance, and solid waste management at $1.2 million. The expenditures, citywide, the operating expenditures is $137 million, and that's up $7.5 million. The largest contributor there is the water district's operating expenses are up $7 million, and the general fund, the police department, is up $800,000, and the fire department is up $600,000. And these figures are all from the adopted budget in fiscal year 2012, 2013. Our capital improvement plan is $30.007 million, and that's up about $6.8 million from last fiscal year. The contributors there is the sanitary and sewer treatment, we've got $2.17 million that they're going to be using in capital improvements, and also SCLA is $1.3 million. The fund additions is where, you know, our revenues are greater than our expenditures in different funds, and that's at $2.5 million that the citywide, we plan on adding to our fund balances, which is down about $8 million from last year. And the largest contributor there is the water district, which is down about $5 million, because they're not contributing to their fund balance, they're using some of their fund balance. This graph shows a little bit about, you know, where we've been and where we're going. It compares the general fund to the CIP budget, and then it also compares it to our overall budget. The green is in all funds, including the CIP, and also including the general fund. I like this graph because at the end of the graph, it shows that we're increasing, but our increase is definitely at a stable, more relatively conservative rate. And so I feel like we're doing what we should be doing at this point. Our citywide overall operating revenues, this graph shows us, you know, where those revenues come from by type. We have about 48 percent in charges for services. And looking at this, you know, most of those charges for services come from our funds, such as our water district, or SCLA, or V-MOOS, or sanitary, solid waste, those ones, those funds that are charging for the services that they're providing. And then we see the taxes and the other contributors of the revenues by type. Also on that one, I wanted to point out that the intergovernmental revenue, most of that is grants that we receive, the federal grants that we receive, and that's the big portion of, you know, where we receive that revenue overall as a citywide. Our operating expenditures, you can see that this is mainly the special funds, which is, again, our water district, our solid waste, our SCLA, those special funds that have that biggest chunk of our overall expenditures are by activity. Our capital improvement plan is $3.7 million, and it's up $6.8 million. And these are some of the improvements, or this is how those improvements are going to be distributed between the different ways that they're going to be spent, you know, with streets and with sewers, traffic signals, drainage water, wastewater treatment facilities, the airport, V-MOOS, the facilities, and miscellaneous. So those are in section four of your budget, you'll see how those distributions are made with the capital improvement plan. Now, let's go to general fund revenues. We're really impressed and we're really excited to present a budget to you again this year, where we're not having to use any of our fund balance. You know, our revenues equal our expenditures this year, as Mr. Robertson has indicated, and so it's our second year in a row that we've not had to use any of our fund balance, which we're really pleased with. As you can see, our huge revenues that we receive in the general fund are our taxes. You know, that makes up 75 percent of the revenues that we receive in the general fund. We'll talk about each one of those separate taxes, because it makes up such a big chunk of the revenues that the general fund receives in another couple of slides. And then we have the general fund expenditures by division. As you can see, the public safety, which is the fire, the police, and they make up the, you know, 66 percent of our general fund budget, so they're the big chunk there. And you can see how the rest of them are distributed within the other organizations in the city. Next, we have a slide that shows the general fund budget comparison, and I like this slide too, because it kind of shows, you know, how, you know, we've had those great huge increases, but for the last three years, we've had steady, you know, continuous, a little bit of growth, but very conservative growth, which is what I'm always aiming for. Next, Mr. Robertson talked about property taxes and where we were going with property taxes, and so I just want to review some of our sales tax and our other taxes, and how we're budgeting for those. This shows from 2003 to 2004, how are the revenues that we've received with our sales tax. And all of them are actual numbers, except for the last two years, we haven't completed our budget for our numbers, our actual numbers for 12, 13, and so that's still our budget. And then our proposed budget for 13, 14, we're proposing a slight increase in sales tax of about $400,000. Then we've got our franchise taxes, that we have another slight increase, about $300,000 there. But as you can see, in 2011, 2012, our actual numbers came in at 2.6, and so from those numbers, we're only looking at about a $200,000 increase. Most of those increases, as I reviewed this, came from our cable franchise taxes. And then we have our transient occupancy tax, our TOTs. We're, you know, proposing a relatively large increase there. We've recently, the city has recently gone out and done a TOT audit with all of our hotels in the city, and we found that some of our hotels haven't provided, you know, the accurate reports, and also haven't, you know, given us all of the TOTs. And so we'll probably have a large TOT revenue that we will receive in 2013, 14, because of that audit, and then we'll, you know, maybe stabilize after that. And so those are kind of one-time fees that we'll be looking at. Our public safety, we've preserved our current levels of service in our police department and our fire department. The police department's budget did go up from $18.7 million to $19.5 million, and our fire budget went up from $12 million to $12.7 million. You know, our other core levels of service are maintained for the public safety, such as our code enforcement, our animal control, and our street sweeping. This again shows a little, a slide that shows, you know, how through the past five or six years, we've, the public safety, the police and the fire have compared to the general fund expenditures, and our police and fire now sit at 66 percent of our general fund, and the rest of the divisions are at 34 percent. This concludes, you know, my portion of this presentation, and now we'll have our department discussions, and we'll start out with Sean McGlade.
Before we begin with Mr. McGlade, Doug, was it your intent that every department make their presentation before we ask questions of each individual?
That's a pleasure of the council. If you have questions for Ms. Mosier or myself, we're happy to take them.
I have questions, and I hate to wait until the end, because I'm sure I'll forget them, but, members of the council, do you have questions of Ms. Mosier?
Yeah, I have several. They expand several different departments, so they're not, so I don't know if you want to wait till it's all over, that's fine with me.
If they're departmental questions, it might be best to wait until that department has given the brief presentation. If they're more overall in nature, it'd be good to take them now, I think.
Here's an overall question, because, and it deals with the, what you call the reductions in fund balance, Adele. It looks to me like we've got capital improvements budgeted for over $20 million, and we've got this thing called reductions in fund balance of about $19 million. I come from a profit sector, not the government, so it's, the reductions of fund balance, if I'm understanding it, are mostly going for capital improvements. They really aren't going to cover operational expenses, are they?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Question? I had a question on the reduction in the fund balance. I guess I didn't know where to look, because I saw the estimated expenditure, reduction in fund balance total, but I didn't see the total of the fund balance. So I don't know if they're gone to zero, they're in a deficit position, or if you have adequate fund balances so that you can borrow from them or spend from them, and I didn't find an explanation for that, so I'd like to have that explanation somewhere along the line. I also saw an expenditure for administration and administrative services. I'd like to get a distinction between administration cost and administrative services cost. Both sound like administration to me. It's very low figures. County has an overall administrative cost of about, what is it, 23 percent that they tag on to almost every category, whether it's garbage collection, or police, or whatever. We have an adopted policy of administrative costs that I know of, and so I'm not sure how we arrive at administrative costs, whether it's just an actual cost that's calculated by finance, or is it an actual cost calculated by each of the department heads when they're providing administrative services.
Mr. Mayor, let me answer your second question first, and that is that the difference between administrative services and administration. Administrative services very specifically is the divisions of finance, human resources, and information technology, whereas administration is sort of a catch-all for the city manager's department, city council, city attorney, risk management, sort of effectively everything on the north end of the building, if you will. It's not any kind of an administrative overhead per se. It's not any kind of an administrative overhead percentage-type cost, it's the actual budgets for each of those divisions. So with regard to the use of fund balance, I think in Councilmember Kennedy's question, that provided some insight into those. I'm not aware, with the exception potentially of the street lighting district, that is a topic of discussion right now, I'm not aware that any of those reductions in fund balance are as a result of operational costs. It's effectively capital monies that were collected, for the most part, and are now being expended in next fiscal year. It doesn't mean that it's overspending or anything like that. It's simply next year, we plan on building some things, and we're going to spend the money that was collected for those purposes. Adele, please feel free to fill in anything that I may have missed in responding to that question.
And I think that, you know, we can go back and we can look at each one of those funds that are using the reductions in fund balance and give you a number, you know, so that you can feel comfortable that there is sufficient fund balance there, but most of it is in the CIP budgets.
There's some confusion in a complicated budget, as this is by almost everyone at different times. And if you're proposing to shut off streetlights, as we've had that conversation, and we're proposing that under the street lighting, under the street lighting districts, there are some people who are skating free and other people who are paying an amount, and once we equalize it, where people pay their share, there will be some people that receive a substantial reduction. Other people who have not been paying will pay some. But then you show street lighting district, reduction in fund balance of four hundred eleven thousand. Sounds like you must have an adequate fund balance, so what was the problem with shutting off streetlights? I think that the public, not seeing the internal workings, deserve an explanation on those items where it appears contradictory. I know it's not, but, and then you don't, while you show a reduction in the fund balance of four hundred eleven thousand for street lighting, I didn't find the actual balance in the street lighting district, so.
Let me provide that.
Okay, that's all I have.
I'm going to wait departmentally.
Okay.
It'll be easier.
Okay. Mr. McGlade?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to be very brief, I promise. I'm just going to touch basically on the funds and the budget, and essentially along the same lines as Mayor Cox was talking about, what the fund balance is, how much of that fund balance is being used, and in certain cases, there are minimal operational costs that would be paid for from reserve funds. The first one I've touched on is gas tax. So the operating expenses and the revenues are matched. There's a capital improvement program of seven hundred thousand dollars, which will come from the fund balance, which stands at about three point six million. Part of that, seven hundred thousand dollars, is about half a million going into slurry seal and overlaying. LTF funds, there's a capital project of a million dollars going into sidewalk and curb and gutter projects, with a hundred and thirty-three thousand coming from the fund balance, the rest being funded from the revenues. Compressed natural gas is an enterprise fund. It's projected to have a surplus of seventy-two thousand dollars. We have obtained two grants from MDAQMD for approximately eight hundred thousand dollars that will enable us to build an additional CNG station in the Foxborough area. The drainage fund, that's the monthly four-dollar drainage fee that is charged.
What's the account number for your drainage fund?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Can you give us pages, Sean, so we can follow along? You're moving from page to page, right?
Not really. I'm just giving you highlights to try and keep it brief.
A PowerPoint that's supposed to be up here so we can follow along?
No.
Not at this point in time.
Okay, didn't mean to interrupt. Rephrase what you're looking at now.
The drainage fee, that's the four-dollar drainage fee. The revenues exceed expenses by eighty-six thousand dollars. So that allows us with six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in capital improvement. Five hundred and ninety-four thousand needs to be taken from the fund balance, which is one point seven million. Landscape maintenance.
Those proposed expenditures, is that two million nine? Two million and nine thousand, is that what that equals? We'll do it later. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, if you're looking at the total budget.
Well, I'm assuming that the budgeted expenditure equals the revenues that's listed on.
That's about right, yes. There's a surplus of eighty-six thousand dollars. And with an additional five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars from the fund balance, then we're able to put six hundred and eighty thousand dollars into capital projects.
That's on page twenty.
Sean, are you going to talk about water?
Yes.
Measure I?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I'm jumping around, but I really was trying to keep this very brief.
If we can go to the page on this item you're talking about, that helps us.
Certainly. We're going to touch on LMADs now on page thirty-seven. There are expenditures exceeding revenues of seventy-four thousand dollars. We plan on three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in capital improvement projects, so there needs to be four hundred and forty-four thousand coming from reserves, which stand at seven point two million.
Is it because of the capital improvement expenditure that causes the expenditure to exceed reserves?
It's not that simple. There are eight districts. Some of them are, there's about three of them where the expenditures are exceeding the revenues. We will be bringing those three to you to discuss, going back to the voters for increasing that assessment. That's the main contribution to the deficit.
Is there a procedure in place when the original LMADs were adopted that allows that to be revised after a public hearing and action with the council? Or any of them have been established that are frozen as to the income?
The earlier ones are basically frozen. We're fixed with that. We've been trying to work within those revenues. The later ones did have an escalator factor built in, so those are not ones that have a problem. And on page thirty-seven, though, the, all eight districts are kind of lumped together to give an overall.
I have been under the impression that in the past, where there was a insufficient stream of revenue to support some of the earlier formed LMADs, that they still provided a fairly high level of service because it wasn't a great amount, but eventually people resent paying money for somebody else's services when they don't receive it, which means that they have a choice of increasing the amount of fees to cover the LMAD cost or reducing the services for their neighborhood.
That's exactly correct. That's one of the.
It has to be appropriate. It has to be a policy. I think the subsidies that go to people who don't want to pay their way is just over with. Has to be.
There's no subsidizing yet. That's the problem, is that each one of those LMADs is looked at individually, it's presented in the budget collectively, but each one is looked at individually because we, that's how we have to justify the assessment.
But I think that certainly the council will understand, the council understands that there is a public good, to a large extent, on public right-of-ways, where there can be some cross-funding or subsidies, but internally, if they're enjoying the benefits, they need to pay for it, and staff needs to analyze those and bring them back to the council.
That's exactly what we propose. There are three of those that are, we've red-flagged them to take a very, very close look at them and see what needs to be done, bring it to the council, and see what direction we need to get.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I know you're all aware, but for the public's benefit, all of those landscape maintenance assessment districts, the dollars that are generated in those need to be spent within that same district. It would be inappropriate for us to spend those dollars elsewhere. Certainly, other revenue sources could be brought in, but as the mayor has indicated, that would be unfair to the rest of the residents of the city to help support a higher level of service with regard to landscaping in an area that refuses, should they refuse, to increase that amount. Effectively, in the past, we've gone to an election that essentially says, we have two options, either reduce the service to the dollars that are coming in, or increase the dollars to the service level that has been provided in the past. I don't know what the, how those elections have turned out. They would not be a citywide election, it would just be for those residents within that landscape maintenance assessment district. And I honestly don't know how they've turned out. I suspect there's been a mix of actions taken. Sometimes we reduce the landscaping, sometimes we keep the service the same and the tax goes up.
Well, I, in those few instances where the expenditures exceed, I'm quite confident that it comes from this council here. If we lead the public to believe, or if we actually have frivolous expenditures, they're not going to be able to cooperate because they say, why not? Why are you spending it on A when you could spend it on B? I think if we are fair and paying all of the expenditures we have and the programs we have, and we show the public that we're sincere and making sure that we are right, objective, certainly open to all the public, that they will be willing to increase, it's probably a small amount, but they would increase the amount of the fees paid for the LMAD because they are the recipient of it. And I know the individuals that I've talked to, once they recognize that they're paying their way and not somebody else's way, they become a lot more cooperative in doing that. So I feel confident it can be done.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one broad question about fund balance? The budget does not attempt to reconcile fund balance on next year's projections. So you say you're using fund balance, but we don't know what the beginning fund balance is and what it's going to be after you use it, because you haven't tried to do that. And I can appreciate that because it's probably just too difficult. You don't really know yet what the beginning fund balance is going to be. So this is a question, is it safe for us to assume that you're not going to overspend a fund balance? You will not take funds out of a fund balance if they aren't there?
Yes, that's correct.
Or, and maybe I want to add to that the question, if you know you're going to have to borrow from funds to accomplish something, you're going to tell us that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just as a caveat, the one fund that we are aware it would not meet its revenue number is the street lighting fund, something that is in the middle of an election now. And obviously, the result of that election will greatly affect our ability to either cover that potential fund balance deficit or not. And that'll be a decision that'll be made by the council once we know the results of that election.
And my understanding is that diff and measure I, the fund balances there is a whole complex.
Exactly. Most of the capital funds, as you've kind of indicated a couple of times now, and I have said, I don't want to repeat myself, but effectively, the times that those capital funds come in and then are spent aren't necessarily based, in fact, they're not based on an individual fiscal year. You don't wait, you don't collect capital funds and spend them typically in the same year. Something that happens over a multi-year period, and as projects are needed, it's spent. So there will be times that we increase fund balance in capital funds and times that we decrease fund balance in capital funds. And it doesn't mean that we are upside down or spending reserves, we're simply spending on a different schedule than we're collecting, but certainly not spending more than we're collecting at any one time.
Flipping over to page fifty-one through fifty-three is the Water District. Actually, to fifty-four, essentially, overall, the Water District revenues and expenditures match. When you also include the WID II revenues of, there would be cash positive of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And the difference between the overall district revenues versus expenditures, there's a deficit of nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so it's in a twenty-seven million, twenty-eight million dollar budget that's pretty close to being balanced.
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Kennedy?
I looked through all of the different funds, and I didn't see depreciation appear in any budget anywhere, except in the Water District. So we've got eight million dollars of depreciation in the Water District budget, and I know citywide it's something like twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars. We're not counting depreciation anywhere else in this budget. Why are we counting it in the Water District?
I'd have to defer to Adele on that one. I see Steve raising a pen, but he may be best to answer that. Steve Barman?
Well.
We have other enterprise funds.
But they don't have depreciation.
A relatively high-level version of why. It's a legacy from the way the Water District operated when they were separate from the city, and it's not something that we've made change to. It's part of the rate, it's included in the rate, the depreciation, so that the replacement costs are met at the time that they're needed.
I understand that, but we're looking, we are saying, we're saying to ourselves, to each other, and to the world out there, that we're coming up short six point seven million dollars when we've got eight point five million in depreciation that we haven't counted anywhere else, and we're counting it here. And I don't get that.
My understanding is that the water code requires that we charge a rate that's commensurate with, you know, the cost to provide water, including depreciation.
Yeah, I think it's painting a different picture with the Water District, and I'm not so much concerned about the fee setting, although I think it does have implications for fee setting. But it's just, when I saw that, I thought, wait a minute, why don't we factor it in everywhere? And we don't. And we're doing it in one place, one place only. As long as everyone understands that, let's just all be aware of it.
Right, and typically, you know, we have, the city has budgeted cash, you know, budgeted on a cash basis, you know, the revenues and the expenditures, you know, and not been involved with the depreciation. And so this is, you know, requested that the Water District, the Water District requested that this be part of their budget.
Well, okay, depreciation, of course, is an accounting principle, and it's the cost of allocating the, it is the annual cost of capital improvements, is what it is. What we have here is both depreciation and five point eight million dollars in capital improvements. Now, some people would say we're counting the same dollars twice.
Of the five point eight, maybe some of them, of the five point eight, two point two million would be from restricted funds, which would be the connection fees, and that would be for capacity enhancements. And the three point six would be replacement-type capital projects where they.
We have that same issue at the airport, we have that same issue at the treatment I just, I just don't see a reason for doing this, frankly. I just can't see a reason for doing it. And I think it creates a distortion, honestly.
Mr. Kennedy, don't we include that in, as a part of the audit?
Oh, yeah.
In all funds?
Absolutely.
And then the other question I have is, why in this current fiscal year is there no depreciation at all? In the water? I'm showing dashes in those areas.
There's no depreciation anywhere except in the Water District.
Page fifty-two?
That's, and.
I'm looking at depreciation expense.
Was not included in our budget last year. This is a difference in account, or in, you know, the way the district wanted that shown. And that's why in last year, it was not included, but they specifically asked for it to be included this fiscal year.
Who asked for it?
Normally, we would not count depreciation because we're counting the capital projects. We're looking at how the money's going to flow. We never write a check for depreciation.
That's correct.
It's a cost, it's a cost, but it's not part of the budget.
Well, I'm just looking at 2011, 2012. Well, I'm just looking at 2011, 2012. There was depreciation expense. I'm just curious as to why there was no budget for it this year, and yet, we're proposing it for this next year.
Yeah, if you look at fifth or sixth line, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, it indicates in 2011 depreciation, $6.05 million, 2012, $7.04 million. 2013 budget is nothing. Actuals as of 5/28/13 is nothing. Proposed 2014 budget, $8.05 million. The question, I guess, would be, why are those...
Why?
Why they're like...
Well, the actuals would show that the expense, you know, and how much the expense would be there, but they would not be budgeted for on an, you know, on an ongoing basis.
And this is not the time for an accounting discussion about depreciation. I understand depreciation. All I'm saying is, if we're going to budget, we should budget consistently across all departments. That's all. That's all I'm saying. We've got capital improvements. We're identifying those. Operating expenses, identify those. We have overstated expense, budgeted expenses to be consistent and comparative by $8.5 million in the water district. And I just think we ought not to do that. Enough said.
You know, I agree with Councilman Kennedy. I think there does need to be consistency in this budget. How would that impact finance to get that corrected?
Actually, I think it's more of a philosophical discussion about the way to account for it. It wouldn't have no impact on their ability to provide service for next year, because it is simply depreciation. We have two options, several options.
I meant, how would it impact Adele to get this corrected before we adopt it?
You could, in theory, adopt it as it sits now, because it's not a true expense. You could adopt this budget, it would have to happen at the actual budget hearing later tonight at 7 o'clock. You could adopt it, essentially striking out that depreciation, and staff could come back at a later time to, when we discuss the rates, because that's essentially the reason it's in there, is for the rates. That's a discussion you've already decided to have, and I believe it's December. So, there are several options. If you get to the end of the budget workshop and into the budget hearing later tonight, and would like to go ahead and approve the budget, you could approve it as it sits, and it will have effectively no impact, because it's really more of an accounting issue. You could approve it, striking out the depreciation. And again, it would have very little effect, and we could discuss it at the time of the rate. I really think, as Councilmember Kennedy suggested, it's really more of an accounting philosophy issue until such time as you need to consider the rates.
That's the key, the effect that it has on the rates. That's primarily what it affects, what else.
And I think when it comes to the discussion of rates, rates should not cover both depreciation and capital improvements. That doesn't make sense.
You used to call it capital replacement fund.
I know.
Okay, that's enough.
So, jumping over to page 42, under the sewer and wastewater treatment, the revenues exceed expenses by 1.3 million.
Or 25.
Page 42. With planned capital improvement projects totaling $3.9 million, that would mean that we would need to take $2.6 million from reserves, which the balance is right at $9.6 million.
Sean, what are the contract services at the wastewater treatment plant? Is that the operational people?
Correct.
Yeah. Why are we so much lower this year? One month to go.
Um, not sure.
What page, Mr.?
I'm on page, when they copied mine, it didn't go through the copier very well, so my page numbers disappeared.
42.
Forty, yeah. We're at, last year's actual, no, that says 2013 actual. Is that really 2013 budget? That third column?
Yes, that should read budget.
Okay, and then 2013 actuals as of May 28.
Is it the 8 million number?
8.3 is the budget, and 6.1 is the actual through May?
Yes, that's BBWRA charges. We still have to pay BBWRA for wastewater treatment, as well as fund the city's wastewater treatment facilities.
Well, that's the RF lot that goes to BBWRA.
Correct.
Why is that down?
Well, the actuals of 6.1 million?
Yeah.
I mean, generally, there, I mean, that's a partial year. If you prorate that, you come out right at that number. I, yeah...
Maybe it doesn't capture all costs through May.
Likely does not capture the May payment, is what I guess.
There's probably one monthly billing missing there.
We will probably hit that budget number.
I would expect so, yes. Engineering on page 67, there was a few things in there that I'd like to touch on. The overall engineering budget has been reduced by about 16%. The reason for that is a better system of allocating the engineers' times to the restricted funds and to grants. Also expecting about $212,000 in revenues from permitting and plan checking. So, if you notice, coming from a budget this past year of $551,000, it's coming down The engineering division's going to be managing in the order of magnitude of $11 million worth of grant funds from EDA, from FAA, transportation funds. Also touching then on the street lighting, I think we've all realized the challenges with that on page 85. We have a deficit of $412,000. And we'll find out on July 18th what the outcome of that vote is going to be. Like to touch on Measure I also. At this stage, we're...
Did you say 28 through 30?
Through 30, yes.
Thank you.
At this stage, we're anticipating zero revenues. We fully believe that Sandbag will be withholding the normal Measure I revenues that the city's used to obtaining. The reason for this is the inability to pay for the additional city share. There was an agreement with Sandbag to fund half of the interchange. There was a requirement for a $10 million deposit, and then the city is supposed to, excuse me, add to those funds. It does not have the development impact fee funds to be able to do that. As a result, we fully anticipate that Sandbag is going to be withholding Measure I funds.
All Measure I funds?
All Measure I funds.
Which is related to capital, major roads.
Yes, we tried to negotiate with them at the time of the agreement, so that we could have some revenue stream to keep operating expenses for traffic signal maintenance, traffic control, and some minimal capital improvement projects. Sandbag said no, so we're stuck with the situation we're in now. We fully expect that the revenues from Measure I will be zero this coming year.
And the following year? This year only? Next three years, what?
The projections that we have indicate somewhere between two and a half and three years it will take to pay from the withheld Measure I funds our remaining share of the interchange.
The Measure I funds that would be coming to the city if we didn't have the withholding is projected to be what?
Right around $4 million a year, yeah.
So, three years ago, we entered into an agreement and placed $10 million, so we've had, including this year, at least three years of that, which is $12 million.
Well...
Twenty-two million, that exceeds the 50% cost. I'm having a problem with the math.
Three years ago, we weren't bringing in $4 million. It was probably more like $3 million. There was, we're not supposed to be using Measure I to pay for the interchange. It has to be development impact fees.
And the way the agreement is set up, they don't start withholding that Measure I or keeping that Measure I until such time as we don't make an additional payment, once they've spent the $10 million that we had on deposit. Just last month, we got a notice that they are below the threshold to give us the notification. We indicated to Sandbag that we aren't in a position to be able to contribute additional dollars. It shouldn't have been a surprise to anybody at Sandbag, because that's how the agreement was written, to allow for just such an occurrence. So, at this point, although we haven't had any withheld that I'm aware of, we are anticipating it for all of next year.
Well, my question is that, in the Measure I formula, there's monies that go to fund several subjects, including new construction, major streets, road maintenance. So, they're going to take all of it, or just for the major roads?
It's interesting, if you go back to the original discussion, which happened at the Mountain Desert Committee meeting of Sandbag, the agreement that was discussed and approved by the Mountain Desert Committee was that they believed that Victorville should be allowed to retain at least those operational items that pay for street maintenance, signal maintenance, those sorts of things. Ultimately, when it went to the full Sandbag Board, Sandbag staff made a determination they didn't believe they could support that scenario, and they instead argued to take all of the Measure I, at which point, that was approved by the Sandbag Board, approved by the council in an agreement form, and that's what we have to date. That, to be totally candid, is part of the reason why I'm not comfortable making a meager payment that we may be able to make from development impact fees towards that interchange at this time, until such time as we know that we've gotten through the next roughly three years of street maintenance. So, effectively, what we've done in those three years since that agreement, assuming that's about right, is we've banked those Measure I dollars. We've banked any development impact fees that we've received in order to get us through these three years, that when we won't have Measure I. We certainly, although we aren't required to make a payment, we certainly could make a very small payment in development impact fees towards the interchange, but it would not change the revenues for Measure I for next year, because we couldn't make enough of a payment to cause them to do anything but start taking our Measure I dollars. So, until such time as we start getting Measure I dollars again, I can't advise the council to make any kind of a payment, because we simply would be spending money that we may need for street repairs or signal maintenance.
So, we will use DIF funds to pay, borrow, and pay for street maintenance?
Effectively, we will use some, we may use some DIF funds, but more likely, we will use the Measure I that we've banked over the last few years, which is an appropriate expenditure for those dollars.
Okay.
If, at some point in the future, the roughly $11 to $12 million that would be withheld from Measure I ultimately has to be paid by DIF. So, at some point in the future, those DIF monies would have to repay those Measure I dollars, and we would use them in the same manner that we would have normally anywhere.
Yeah, okay.
The Measure I fund balance is about $8.8 million. We're still planning to put $300,000 into slurry seal overlay, and another 1.7 into other miscellaneous capital improvement projects. But we do, in our projection, believe that we can run three years with the Measure Is that we have received to date. And that's the conclusion of my five-minute presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McGlade.
Within that timeframe.
I think this was a random selection when Adele put the PowerPoint together. Looks like you're up next, Keith. Courtney, the list.
Thank you, Doug, and members of the city council. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this budget for the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. This budget wouldn't be complete if it wasn't for the assistance of my senior management team for the airport. I'll introduce them. That's Sophie Smith and Mr. Eric Ray. Eric Ray's one of the newest members of the airport team. He's our airport manager and been here for just under a year now. Got an anniversary coming up.
Keith Footpage is the airport...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to share pages with you. In fact, I closed my book, because I'm going to try to keep this very high-level, very executive.
Five minutes.
No, no, no. I will welcome you to open pages and ask me questions at the end, but I thought, maybe departing a little bit from the last presentation, I'll try to keep it very high-level. I encourage you to take notes, because I'm going to give you summary numbers. But I think altogether, one of the first things that I did want to impress upon you all is that the airport is operating well. It's been operating well financially for the last three fiscal years, and that's largely because of a transition that occurred back in the '09, 2010 fiscal year. And we've restructured things, we've improved collections, we've been very diligent about negotiations, and we've very closely monitored our expenses. So, having said that, for the last three fiscal years, SCLA has not been a draw on the operating budget of the city. In fact, we've been operating with cash surpluses. So, to answer one of the questions that I heard relative to fund balance, this fiscal budget does actually require a draw on cash reserves. We had a fund balance in May of about $6.2 million. This budget will actually draw on that to the order of about $1.6 million. So, we've certainly analyzed and have projected that there's certainly going to be sufficient fund balance to carry us through the fiscal year, and we certainly are expecting through future fiscal years. And those monies that we do collect and reserve, we operate under a rule, and it's an FAA rule, that monies generated on the airport, stay on the airport, have to be reinvested in the airport. And a very macro concern that we have going forward is, with the lack in dependency on redevelopment, with the redevelopment tax increment no longer existing, one of the biggest challenges we're going to have going forward, and it's something that we're managing and planning for now, is that with your old, dilapidated infrastructure at SCLA that we've inherited, there's a very finite resource now to start managing and planning for those future capital needs. And when we talk about capital needs, we talk about runways, we talk about taxiways, we talk about tower equipment, a lot of the essential infrastructure that keeps that airport running safely. So, it is going to be a concern of ours going forward. We're going to have to rely very heavily upon FAA support, FAA grants. But this budget, from an operational perspective, and I underline "operational" because this budget does not include the financial side of the authority, which is the bonds. We've heard a lot about the bonds, and we know the default status of the bonds. But this is your operating budget, so it's analyzing very basically your revenues and your expenditures. This fiscal budget proposes revenue generation to the order of $7.3 million. It proposes expenses to the order of $7.1 million. So, we're actually projecting an operating surplus of about $233,000. We are expecting a need for $1.8 million to fund capital improvements. That money actually gets leveraged against $7.1 million of actual infrastructure improvements. What that means is, we're going to take $1.8 million and use that to leverage against and serve as matches for grants, things like runway reconstructions. Talking about CIP for two seconds, we are projecting $7.1 million of infrastructure. Your biggest improvements are going to be fuel farm, fuel farm improvements. We're planning the construction of a remote loading rack, which will make our fueling operations a lot more simple at SCLA, a lot more operationally effective, basically shortens the fueling times for the trucks to get to the airplanes.
What's a remote fueling?
It's a glorify, it's an airport term for a gas station. Basically, we're going to build a pipeline from our fuel tanks to the airport ramp. And it's probably, I don't know, maybe a mile long worth of pipe. But it's basically an underground pipeline and essentially puts a gas station at the ramp so that the refueling trucks have a closer distance to go to to actually get filled up. And that's an important program for us because the road that that, the fuel trucks do have to run on right now, they're not designed for very heavy trucks, so we're actually incurring some very significant damage to roadways that aren't designed for heavy trucks. Runway 321 is going to be one of your biggest projects for this fiscal year and the next fiscal year, and that's a reconstruction of 321. That's your crosswind runway. It's in your worst of condition, but we're also finding some problem areas in runway 1735, and that'll be another capital improvement that we'll be making this year. And largely, what we're finding in a lot of our investigative work out there is, the way the Air Force had constructed those runways, there's not adequate base. In fact, in some cases, there's no base as a support structure to the runway. So, we're starting to see cracking and some pavement failings. So, we're having to address those as quickly as we can. In our revenues, we watch our revenues very closely. If I broke down the $7.3 million revenue projection for you, 70% of that is generated from lease revenues. That's hangar rentals, building rentals. The largest, or the second-largest revenue center is from landing fees, and we're watching that very closely. Landing fees constitute about 20% of our revenues, and the largest part of that comes from the Air Force. And we do have a renegotiation coming up with them, so we're certainly hoping that we can continue to secure that because it's a very important part of the revenue side. On the cost side, your major cost centers, personnel makes up 22% of your budget, CIP is 20% of your budget, and fire is about 18% of your budget. Those three categories alone make up 60% of your total budget. Finally, as it relates to personnel, no significant changes. We are adding one new body, just to keep the analysis simple, and that's a management support staff in the admin office at the airport. That's my thumbnail overview of the budget, and we're available for any questions or comments you may have.
Now, what page can I look at?
Any page you want.
Look at 48. I know Keith didn't want to talk about this because it's just something he has no control over. It was never part of the airport operations. The airport took a $50 million hit to fund balance when the council decided to make a deposit on the GE stuff, and it's sitting there, and it's always been an aggravation to him from an operational standpoint. And when the audit report comes out, you see this big, old, ugly, $50 million negative fund balance. But it is important to point out that that's dead and gone. That is lost. The operational fund balance that you're tracking, Keith, I think is purely operational revenues and operational expenses?
That's correct. I get fairly technocratic, but you have an authority financial statement, which includes things like bond proceeds, and as you're speaking of the $50 million bond-related matter, that's separate and distinct from the operational. And when I say operational, I'm just talking about the airport, not the authority.
The only question I had was, does any portion of your net operating results, your surplus, if you will, have to be used, or is it in any way committed to debt service, to paying bonds?
It is not. In fact, it's distinctly required because it's generated on the airport, that it has to be spent on the airport and to benefit the airport. Different from the bonds, and why I wouldn't recommend using operating surplus revenues to satisfy the bonds, is the bonds very separately identify a very clear and distinct security for those bonds, and that's property tax increment that's subject to the RDA dissolution.
Since you mentioned the bonding, there's outstanding bonds, and there have been defaults that are paid as property taxes come in. And then, I think, within the last two weeks, there was a story about defaulting on a payment now due. Are there any past payments that are due that haven't been made, excluding that one recent story?
There are. I can't explain without the information in front of me the exact nature of them, but we have had amounts due in the past that effectively get told until there's adequate tax increment revenue sufficient to eventually pay those off.
With the projection of tax, property taxes being up, will there be an increase in property taxes to pay bond indebtedness as a result of the increased property tax?
There will be an increase. We don't have a projection to show what that is yet. And ultimately, over time, I think the last report that I saw from our consultant showed us getting back to at least a break-even point on an annual basis about four years from now. Obviously, that's subject to the real estate market. And at that point, theoretically, the next year, if it continues to grow, is when we would be beginning to repay a lot of those, a lot of those past issues.
That's something we'll know a lot more clearly as to what our exact position is going to be. We did not include the financial bonds as a part of this budget. That's something that we'll do as a function of the successor agency taking its actions in approving ROPS. And because the payment of the bonds are dependent upon revenue collections from the successor agency, we'll be doing that under a separate action later in the fiscal year.
Is there any, is there a requirement that those have to be paid, even if the pay is delayed? Or there's some fear, maybe, that the city will not simply pay the principal interest that's due on those bonds?
No, it has to be paid.
It has to be paid.
It has to be paid when those revenues become available. But it, there is no requirement that you use other revenues to pay them at this time.
So, if someone is holding that bond, they will get paid?
At some point. Assuming, at some point over the, what, 32 years remaining on the project life, that it increases enough to make those payments, which is extremely likely.
All those bonds...
The question is when, and the current projection, as I recall it, was conservative at, I think, a 2% increase over the next however many years. And effectively, we have four years to go until assumed break-even on those bonds, and I think another four or five until likely the monies would come in to have repaid any past due amounts at that point in time.
You have one other question, and I'm not sure that you addressed this, Keith, so if you have to repeat yourself, I'm sorry. You're budgeting, landing fees are down, are going to be down, what, about $250,000 this next year? And you're budgeting rents to be, what, down maybe $500,000? What's going on there? Any idea?
On the landing fee side, and similar on the fuel flowage, I think you'll also see a pretty significant decrease on the fuel flowage side. And that's largely believing that sequestration is going to continue. We do generate a significant amount of revenues in those categories from aircraft's landings associated with, say, the military troop rotation. Same applies to the fuel sales to those aircrafts. So, that would be the direct correlation there. On the rental side, we have seen some reduction in occupancies. NTC, for example, is one that, earlier this fiscal year, had actually scaled back substantially its footprint. In fact, they dropped about 30,000 square feet of office space. So, we've had some occasions where we've lost some tenancies. Because of the types of buildings, they're not the easiest to get filled back up, speaking specifically to that 30,000 square feet that NTC gave up. It's going to be a tough building to get reoccupied, so largely because of those reasons.
And what's the contract service?
I'm sorry, what page?
Contract services, 2.7 million. What, is that FAA?
No, it shouldn't be FAA.
While Mr. Metzer looks that up, I would like to commend him and Sophie and Eric. Once again, representing a budget that is revenue positive or profitable for the airport, but doing so in a conservative manner. And by saying that, I mean that their philosophy that they've adopted and we support is that, effectively, if a lease is due or is effectively going to term out, say, December, and even if there's a strong likelihood that it'll be renewed, they only budget for those revenues for the six months that is a known lease. They don't project that there's going to be an automatic renewal or anything along those lines. That's one reason why the airport fund is now healthy, is conservative good management tactics such as that.
Have we received any notification from the federal government that they intend to reduce National Training Center operations and training that's occurring in the desert for the troops?
Not official notice. What we have seen is the method or the way they're actually transporting troops. We've seen some operations canceled altogether. Largely, those have been operations that come from overseas. I've known a couple from Hawaii that have actually just canceled altogether because the only method for them to get to the NTC is via plane, and they've basically cut back all flight travel for the rotations. We've seen some other operations where traversing cross-country, instead of plane, they're actually taking buses into the border one. So, the method in which we've seen them operating has changed to where that's affecting us. We did not get an official notice. I'm not necessarily aware that there's anything in our agreement that requires them to notify us.
I'm going to interrupt. We have approximately 30 minutes left to discuss the budget. It appears we're not going to get through it. Does the council want to continue? As we have listed in front of us, which next would be Christian Gunter, or if you feel that any of these should rise to the top, want to hear?
Is Bill Webb over administration?
That would be effective July 1st. He'd be over administrative services.
Is he going to present?
No, he's going to present development.
Development.
Just development.
Who's going to do administration?
Well, administration being the city manager.
Yeah, the personnel.
That would be me. I'll present that. I'm not on the list.
Oh, okay.
But I'll present.
Okay, go ahead then.
Okay.
That's who I want first.
Okay.
To answer a question.
Well, we're going to run out of time. We know that because we need a break before we go into the five o'clock meeting.
That and police is my concern.
Okay.
When, Mr. Mayor, when we scheduled this, we weren't sure how much time we would need. Have two new council members. Trying to make a guess, essentially. We've got a couple of options. As we get closer to 5:00, we can continue the workshop into the 7:00 hour, and when the budget item comes up, which is very early on, we can finish up these things and then ultimately have the public hearing. We could also continue the workshop and the public hearing to next Tuesday, let's say, if the council chooses to do that. It's not a decision you need to make right now, just wanted to relieve any potential concern you may have with finishing up in time today.
Well, the reason that I want, this is a special meeting called "For," this budget presentation. Our regular meeting starts at 5:00, and we know that once we break for that, go into the executive session, we're going to lose an awful lot of members that are here to hear about the budget. You know, I'd actually like to, I don't know if it's allowable, to continue on for about a half hour, at least to cover as many as we possibly can. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, you certainly could do that. What I would suggest doing is just continuing on with the discussion, if you'd like. At 5:00, open the public meeting and then defer going into closed session until you're done with the budget discussion. And just do it, the meeting would be open, take public comment really quickly, continue on with this discussion, and then we'll go into closed session at such time as the budget discussion is concluded.
Okay. And Councilman Vias would like to hear from the city manager and from the police chief. I don't know where Mr. Kennedy went, but he lost out. Mr. McCracken, do you have a preference?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, that's fine. I agree with that. So, Doug, we will go with you.
Sure, there's actually very little change in the, what we've lumped together as administration. No change to the city attorney amount for the regular, ongoing city business. There are, the only changes to risk management would be any contract increases that we're foreseeing. In city council, of course, there are no changes. City manager's department, we have made a very slight change. We eliminated one position. We had looked at consolidating or sharing that position with a marketing need in community services, and ultimately decided that, rather than doing that, we would just eliminate the position, and I've since transferred our public information coordinator into a very similar position in the other department.
All right. I'm sorry, is that going to be budgeted or not budgeted at all?
That position will not be budgeted for next year. So, that is, that is one change from this year. There is a reduction in overall contract services in the city manager's department budget. That is largely because of the class and comp study that was in the current fiscal year, so we won't be paying for that again. The only contract services in the city manager's budget is, I think it's $30,000 for an executive level recruitment. In community services, we've had an acting director now for approximately a year, and I'd like to go ahead and do the full recruitment for that position. The only other issue that is actually not in administration, our Victorville Municipal Utility Services is actually split, most of the costs being in the public works department. The operational costs are in public works. The administration of that actually is in the city manager's department, and I'm happy to say that, for the first time in VMU's history, VMU is actually able to have a balanced budget with no reliance on any other funds, either from itself or from any of the other entities of the city. Happy to answer any questions you may have on administration.
Okay, I'm looking at page 511 in actually the agenda portion for the personnel, where it says the medical, the retirement medical coverage. So, if I understand correctly, if a city employee has been here for eight years, they're, they have bought basically medical for life. Is that correct?
After eight years, I believe the formula would be 25% of the amount awarded.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand. But it takes eight years to get into the, what is it called? To be vested?
To be vested in, into retirement medical benefits, yes. It does take eight years. At that point, you get 25%, and then it goes up on a regular basis, up to 50, 75, and then eventually 100% at, I think, 20 years, but I...
Eight to 14 years is 25%. 15 to 19 years is 50%. And 20 to 24 years is 75%. And anything above 25 is 100% that the city pays for their medical.
That's correct.
Okay. My concern is, is that this creates a huge liability. Has there been, which I'm sure you have, an actuarial study of what is owed for this program right now? How many millions of dollars do you owe for this program? And I'm sure it is huge.
I don't know what the number is, but I know there's an actuarial study that is included in the, in the audit each year for that unfunded liability. That is one of the benefits that is currently under study in the classification and compensation study. The class and comp study is looking at every single benefit as well as pay, and that certainly is one of them that will be, that will be examined and compared to other cities.
So, you don't have what the unfunded liability is for this?
Not as part of the budget, no. I don't, I don't know that figure. Adele, I don't know if you know it off the top of your head, so...
I think because of how the liability has become in most cities, they're getting away from this benefit, you know, obviously keeping it for the current employees that are here the way it is, but canceling it for any future employees. And has that been brought up to do? I mean, I think that's important to do.
It's better to have that discussion when we have the class and comp study completed, which should be July, maybe early August, because we'll have all those comparators, and that's the point that I think the council would want to look at, each and every one of the benefits, to make a final determination on what we're going to offer in the future, whether that affects current employees and new employees, both, or if we freeze the current employees at current levels of benefit and perhaps reduce or change future employees' benefits.
I'd like to add a little bit to that for personal experience, that for those individuals that have Medicare Part A, Part B, even though you may think you have health for life, you have a huge liability if you don't sign up for Medicare Part A, Part B. And as a result of them signing up, you don't, you can't have two primary carriers. So, effectively, even if you say that after 25 years you have 100%, once you reach 65, you do not, or you will take the chance of not signing up for Medicare Part A, Part B, and then if the agency decides to cancel, you're sunk. There is a huge penalty per year for anyone eligible at 65 and six months, or whatever it is, and don't sign up. And there's no arguing with the federal government. I'm glad that there has been a lot of recent newspaper articles in regard to the unknowns, especially for military people, civil service people, government workers. I have a 30% penalty for life, and there's not... I have a 30% penalty for life and there's nothing I can do about it because I thought I had health insurance. The federal government said, oh, no, you don't. Unless you continue to work for the organization or you continue to work for an organization that has the same obligation, you are required to sign up. So you can convert this whole thing that medical is between retirement and 65. Because in reality, that's exactly what it is. And it's really misleading. I pay, I pay a $400 and some dollar a month penalty and will pay for the rest of my life and there's nothing I can do about it because I didn't know anything about it. Nobody informed me, neither this city nor HR, nor the federal government. I was shocked by that, fought a losing battle and then find out that there's a great number of people in the same position I am. So I don't want to tell the employees you have health for life because they don't. We need to rectify this and we need to spread it out. We need to have, for all those people who are going to retire, we need to bring in someone who can explain what the requirements are. And I'll tell you how, I don't want to delay this, but they said, well, you had to be working. And I took all my W-2s and they said, no, you have 1099s. And I said, yes, I have both. And the federal government said, you can't have both and close the file. That's ridiculous, but you know, you can have, but nevertheless, I pay that penalty.
From that experience, we have made some modifications to our annual resolution that's later in the agenda.
Good.
And then additionally, we are in the process, human resources is in the process of revising all of our rules and regulations. I know it's being reviewed by our HR attorneys to come back to the council. And would likely be something around the same time as the class and comp study. We can have maybe a study work session to go over the entire.
I believe that we need to do that. I think we owe those employees who have spent long years of working for this city. I think they need to have the information. I think however we get it, if we hire a consultant or however we do it, because without that information, they're gonna be eventually penalized. And also, without understanding how Medicare Part A, Part B works, there is a, there could be a huge unfunded liability. But it's really not as much as we might think because at 65, we have no more obligation other than secondary coverage.
And as you know, I got a little bit involved with your case trying to explain to the federal government, to Social Security.
They wouldn't take his word either.
The exact nature of your employment and the fact that, yes, you were employed by the city at the time. I would just say that I was convinced then, I'm convinced now, that for whatever reason, your case was an arbitrary decision by the case manager and not the norm, or at least not our understanding and your understanding of what the norm is for that Social Security.
Medicare is a complete mystery. It's just an absolute mystery. I don't care what they say. I was told I needed to file an appeal, so I sat down and filed an appeal and they said, well, you missed the deadline. I hadn't ever left the window.
Well, in the interest of time, I'm gonna ask, actually, let me give just a brief presentation about police. Obviously Lieutenant Billings is here to answer any questions. I had mentioned earlier about the essentially one and a half deputy positions. We do believe and we would like to add the two for the retail theft unit. The only other true addition to the police budget is, I was told what to call it because we don't want to be real specific. But it is new investigative technologies that are greatly aiding in their apprehension of suspects. And I will just leave it at that.
Say that again?
New investigative technologies that greatly aid in their apprehension.
Would this include phone tapping, like our federal government's doing to us right now?
No, it is not phone tapping. It is not, if I were to give you more detail, it might sound a little like that, but it is not that at all.
Well, I just don't want any of us to be in a position where we have to claim that we didn't know.
No, it is not phone tapping. We are not tapping phones at all.
Because all Congress apparently did not know.
No. That is, essentially, that's, that's the only true additions to the police budget at this point in time as presented. Go ahead, Councilmember Vias.
I know that there are a lot of questions. All the councilmen get them from all sources. I hear it every day. Is Police Chief Lucia going to be able to make a presentation to the council at a later time? How long his temporary absence is going to be?
At some point, he certainly could. I'm not sure what you'd want to see in that presentation. Essentially, we have the same number of deputies on the street. Two of them are being funded by us that previously were not. We have the same number of sergeants, same number of captains. We would like to add two more. That's the message I got from Captain Lucia early in the budget season. And we think we will be able to do that in the fall.
I think if nothing else, the public wants to hear from our police chief that they are safe and protected and they're there to serve. I think we need that assurance. And I appreciate it coming from you as the city manager. But I think that it's one of the most sensitive areas that we have in the city. It's one of the most, that the public demand is fully funded for their safety. And I think that we do need to hear from him as soon as is reasonably possible.
Well, I know that-
I think we have to say, if you read the obituaries this morning, Chief's mother passed away yesterday. And so I'm sure he had his hands full with family.
He does. I don't know how personal a man he is, so I didn't want to simply say that to the public. I didn't realize that it was in there today. So I guess that is public information at this time. So actually, I would ask Lieutenant Billings to come down just to speak to that question. And also, I'm sure there will be other questions regarding the police budget. I guess the question that the mayor is asking is, are we safe? Do you have the officers that we need?
I'd like to just add one, because personal safety goes way beyond what a police department can ever do. My personal safety depends on my intelligent management of my own life and staying away from situations that are likely to put me in jeopardy. There's not much you can do to protect me from my own stupid decisions. Let's be clear about that on safety.
The question on safety as far as the city goes, we, there's not a police chief in the state, in the country for that matter, who wouldn't say, who wouldn't welcome additional personnel. That being said, our budget this year is basically a rollover budget from last year, maintaining the current level of staffing we have. And with that level of staffing, we are absolutely able to provide the good citizens of Victorville with adequate police services. In fact, our investigative detective division, if you will, is just doing an outstanding job this last year on following up on some of our major crimes that have occurred in the city and really putting a lot of bad guys, for lack of a better term, behind bars. So we're absolutely safe. The level we have is enough to serve the citizens of the city for right now, taking into consideration the economic realities we're facing in the city and in the state.
You have two questions?
I have a couple of questions. Going back, I had a thought to the school thing. Is, I would like to know, and I know you don't have the numbers with you now, but later, I would like to know, how many calls do we get for the schools? And what is the percentage of time the officers are spending on those calls? I think it's important, and I do understand that when Doug explained that the cities, that it doesn't happen with any other city but Victorville where they were reimbursing 75%. So that made him a little bit, you know, standoffish as to get more aggressive with the school district. But to me, if we're spending a lot of time answering these school calls, I think that maybe the city should get together and approach the school districts and say, you know, we think that you should pay for some of these officers. And the other issue I had was is that administrative fee I saw, it was going up $800,000. Can you explain that again?
Sure, it's actually not going up $800,000. The total, I haven't looked at it right this moment, but I think it's probably, I remember from last year, it was gonna be $850,000. Effectively, about this time last year, we got notice, maybe two months, maybe 14 months ago, I'll say. We got notice from the county administrative office that what had been a 3% of personnel charge for county cost allocation plan was gonna go to 5% times personnel costs essentially, raising our CalCap from a little over $500,000 to about $850,000 last year. Assuming this year is gonna be pretty close to that as well. What, when the cities balked at that amount, especially given that it was unknown to us until late April, as we were all essentially finalizing our budgets, the county board of supervisors voted to hold off on that increase for six months. So effectively, instead of a 3% increase last year or this current year, we had a 1.5% increase. So, but that was only for that time period. So essentially, last year, current year versus the budget that we're looking at, it would have gone up 1.5% or roughly $175,000. And then it'll go another $175,000 again this year, this coming fiscal year.
And it's never been identified what that's for?
There is a-
Like to see what their expenditures are?
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, is Deveraux out there shopping or, you know, I mean, what's going on?
No, the county auditor has produced the county CalCap, the county cost allocation plan. It is effectively, and I'm not exaggerating, 199-page spreadsheet with almost no text to give you any kind of a roadmap. I spent several hours. I was asked, as well as two other city managers, asked to sit on a working committee to work with the county on this CalCap issue. I spent several hours sort of picking apart that CalCap and eventually was able to figure out how exactly it worked. And all I can tell you is that it's not well justified. It may make sense from an accounting standpoint, but we still are left with questions as to why there's costs that are in there that are charged to the sheriff versus other costs. In talking with Mr. Deveraux about this issue, he's given us a couple of assurances. Number one, that there is no planned increases. There's no need for increases above this 5%, something that was questionable a year ago. But also that they are committed to taking another look at it, but it's not the top of their priority list. Something that they want to do maybe in two to three years or over the next two to three years, put together maybe a new CalCap or at least one that is easier to review, understand and explain. Because right now, I kid you not, it is 199 pages of numbers.
I guess I don't understand how the county could just levy this tax on a city without going through like a 218 process or a vote or something, or that we get anything for that. And maybe, is it possible to ask our first district supervisor to pay out of his discretionary fees this?
Certainly, we could ask that. It would be, well, if you paid the entire amount, for Victorville, it'd be over $800,000. I suspect Hesperi is probably in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. Apple Valley is probably a little bit less than that. Adelanto considerably less than that. I don't know how much discretionary fees he has. Not to argue Mr. Deveraux's point, because I don't fully support it. But he would have you believe that in fact, the 3% that we had been charged over the years was not enough. And that this is what it needs to be at on a go-forward basis.
How many officers could we get with $800,000?
$800,000, essentially, that would get you four to five new police officers, depending on how much money you put towards-
It's only that extra $350,000 that we're really quibbling over, not $800,000.
Yes, that would essentially be two police officers. That $350,000, if the county had not increased that amount over the last two years, you could add two police officers for that cost.
I think Mr. Deveraux just needs to find a way to balance the county budget. He's faced the same property tax problems everybody else faces and he thinks this is one way to do it.
You know, I wonder if maybe he's just, he doesn't like the whole contract sheriff's department and this is his way of getting rid of the sheriff's department, I wonder. Making it so difficult for the cities to pay this that we're doing what we're doing and going out for a study. And I think, I wonder if that's his ultimate goal.
Any comment on that?
That's way, way above my pay grade.
Lieutenant Billings is not gonna comment on that. I'm not even gonna let him.
Well, I think what so, what I like so much about this contract compared to police departments is that there's a, there's at least a layer of administration in a typical police department that we don't have here.
That's correct.
We've got, we've got guys on the street who, and if we had a police department, would be sitting in an office.
That's correct.
That's my perception. I don't know if that's true.
You have a police department and you have injured officers too. You'd be, each one of those is less officer on the street. Where our contract are actually feet on the street, even if they get injured, they're replaced. We couldn't do that if we had our own police department without that additional cost. There's a lot of pros and cons and I understand that for those that have been dealing with this for a long, long time, it's frustrating to deal with the county when they arbitrarily decide they need to increase the fees to the cities for contract services with a document that's almost impossible to get through. I had asked some years ago, it was a half-cent sales tax, never did get that, for police and fire, that was approved. And what is the number that the county receives? It was estimated at the time to be 58 million. Some went to court, some went to jail, some went to police. None of them went to fire at the time. I don't know if they ever got any of it. And now they treat that as if it doesn't exist, but it's still in effect. And I wonder about that. Also, people in the city pay taxes, same as people in the county. There is no way to charge the individuals in the county for police services. They still get the excellent coverage from the sheriff's department and therefore, we at least ought to get a credit for the amount of taxes that we pay. That's absent in the contract. It's absent in the formula that he was talking about. I think there's a lot of work to be done, but no matter how we believe it should be done, we don't get any cooperation until we get at least three supervisors to agree with us. So that may be our task to work with cities, to talk to supervisors. And which may be one of the primary reasons that we're doing these studies that we've embarked on, on police and fire, to get their attention, to get them to a table to talk about these issues. We want to be fair about it. We don't want, we don't want free service. We don't expect it. And I know it's a complicated, difficult subject matter, but we need you and you need us, so we can work together.
Thanks, John.
All right.
Appreciate it.
John.
Christian. Make it to, done by five o'clock. Not that we're going to do that. We've got about 12 minutes for Christian and Captain Don Trapp from the, our fire captain to, actually, this is fire captain. He's not a fire captain. He's a division chief, but.
Guess I'd better keep this brief.
That brief is good.
You know, I had a couple of pages here to kind of go through and point out a few things. But pretty much, community services, we're remaining flat. We don't have a lot of growth this year. We're not asking for a lot of extra things. We really have almost nothing in our capital improvement projects. We have a few things coming up. We have two positions to replace, one from retirement, one from a loss of an employee for other reasons this year that we're going to hopefully replace at December this year. We're kind of stretching that as well. We had some other things that we requested and hope to do, but since we fall primarily under the general fund, we simply don't have the money to spend, so we're not going to. That's really the bottom line. In terms of our overall divisions within community services, just to remind you all, we are the solid waste division, source production and recycling, water conservation, animal control, facilities, parks, recreation, library and golf operations. All of those people represented here today. If you have specific questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
We're maintaining current levels?
Excuse me?
Are you saying we're maintaining current levels?
Yes, I have one additional staff person to add in solid waste, I believe, this year. No, water conservation, sorry. I have the two staff members to replace in December, hopefully. I have, sorry, refer to my notes, it helps. Monica Peterson, who's transferred in as our marketing coordinator to help with our forward-facing to our external customers. And I have a change in one staff position from an officer one to a lead worker.
We're not gonna close the pool?
No, ma'am.
Okay, good.
It's open. It's open right now.
Operating, et cetera, sir.
Do you have the only pool? Any of the schools have pools?
Silverado High School, I believe, has a pool that was recently vandalized to the tune of about $60,000. That happened about two weeks, actually Memorial Day weekend is when that happened. Someone drove a high lift into the pool and damaged the bottom of it. It had to be emptied. Someone drove a high lift into the pool and damaged the bottom of it, it had to be emptied. We have, I don't, there, Apple Valley has a pool, I believe, there aren't a lot of others in the area. We actually have quite a few people from surrounding communities who use our pool.
So at least we have one school with a pool, maybe more, but I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Do you have any joint use agreements?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not with pools. Most of our parks, I'll say, we have a joint use agreement with the school district that, if there's a school next door.
Hook Community Center, Hook Park is an excellent example of that, where we're co-located next to a school, and we share their facilities.
Yeah, but, but nothing related to a pool. We don't have any joint, joint use with any pools.
Question, a couple of questions on the golf course.
Sure.
The third item of revenue on the golf course, about a half million dollars, although it's dropped dramatically, is called transfers in. Am I right in assuming that that is the city's subsidy?
That is correct, according to Adele.
That's correct.
Okay. It, it looks like a revenue source, but the fact is, that's what the city is paying to subsidize the golf course. Now, I also want to point out that that's a million dollars less than it was in 2011, so it's a-
Yes, sir.
It's been a tremendous improvement. It's probably less in a year than it costs to operate any individual park.
I wouldn't go that far, no.
Okay. What do you think our, our typical park costs to operate?
Depends upon the size, depends upon the facilities that are there. So it, it's, if you'd like, I could do an analysis for you and get back to you.
Yeah, might be interesting to know.
Okay, very good.
And the last thing is, is it possible to assign our water conservation expert to the golf course?
Um, I think that's-
The system appears to be broken, and they can't take the water off.
Is that a rhetorical question, Mr. Kennedy?
Before we go any further, I have a legal question of the city attorney. When we, when the city discussed the contract with the private company that provides the operations at the golf course, it was ruled that I had a conflict because I live on the golf course. Do I have a conflict in discussing the budget?
On, on the item pertaining to the budget, you should abstain from that portion of it, correct?
Okay, well, that, that I will abstain from that, even though I think they-
Discussion as to the golf course funding, yes. And in your vote, you should approve the budget with the exclusion of any decision on the golf course.
I'd ask the city clerk to remind us of that when we get to that point, so that I'll be in compliance. And so since I can't discuss it, I can't tell you, you have broken water mains, and they can't shut the water off, and it's just flooded out there, so.
Okay, all right, understood.
Mr. Mayor, I happened to, to speak with Councilmember Kennedy about that regarding hole number 12, which was, I think, the biggest area of concern. We have some pocket areas that have some puddling. But in area 12, it's kind of a cute story. I, I happened to speak with Jimmy Hall, our general manager.
Let me just, for those of us who play golf and know that golf course, that's the old number three, and it's a little depression over the ditch, and down it, little depression where we've for a long time gotten balls stuck in muddy area, it's now a water hazard.
Yeah, it's a water hazard now.
It's a small pond.
It, but it's not irrigation water, it's actually drainage water from the Oregrand Wash, and we are working on using some drainage course improvements to remedy that situation. Previously, the golf course personnel from Billy Casper Golf, we're actually pumping it on a regular basis. This is where the cute story comes in. Three weeks ago, they discovered that they had some baby ducklings actually living in that tiny little pond, and their staff member, their staff member requested, and the general manager agreed, to allow those baby ducklings to have a happy and full life until they can at least get around well enough to find another little watering hole, at which point we'll pump it out.
Always good to stay in compliance with the Midratty Fowl Act.
But I don't want fish and game to make that a habitat, no?
Come on, it's a cute story, you don't have to bring up the water fowl.
It is a cute story, no question, without question.
Saving the ducklings.
We, we do have animal control after all.
Something I was not anticipating coming up, or we may have had a slide with a picture of a duckling. All right. Thank you, Christian.
On a more serious vein, do you find that participants in the recreation and park programs have increased, decreased, or remain the same?
Under the recreation side?
Yes.
Glenn?
They've about remained the same. I know we've seen a decrease in things such as adult softball, but an increase in adult soccer. And actually, one of the situations we have is on the park side, the fields are getting a lot more use and being more wear and tear, basically. They're harder to maintain for that reason. So we're, we're having to do a little more to, to keep things maintained, our costs are going up a little bit in that regard. But overall, we're keeping things as flat as possible because we share a budget basically with police and fire, so we have to.
Probably the final determination that, that I actually made to include in this proposed budget is actually our rec pages. It's a booklet that used to come out, we actually had to cancel it about four years ago. It's been available electronically, online, but it doesn't get, get the, the public's attention online. So there is a relatively modest increase to the budget, it's about $40,000.